Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you for joining us for the September 2nd meeting for the Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we have a quorum to begin with, and I hope you all did enjoy your Labor Day weekend. Roll call, please.
Mr. Holroyd?
Here.
Mrs. Knoll?
Here.
Mr. Drury?
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd. Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Tonight, of course, is the work session, and the first item on the agenda would be the Polco Community Engagement Survey presentation. Mark is going to do it, and also Tim Wyatt, and that's a mouthful.
Thank you, Ms. Knoll, and I'm just going to set the stage and turn it over to Tim and the representative from Polco. In February of 2024, at your retreat, the board specifically asked for a list of things for myself and staff to do. This is the last one, and your request was that we renew the community survey in 2025. So Mr. Wyatt was kind enough to take charge of this project, and so I'm going to ask him to tell you what our new survey has to say about York County.
All right. Remotely, we have Jason from Polco. Give me a second as I open it up. He's going to go over the majority of it, but to kind of set the stage for citizens and people who have kind of tuned in for a long time. Six years ago, back in 2019, we had a citizen survey by the SIR or Southeastern Institute of Research, and they did a citizen community survey. These are statistically valid surveys, so we sample a small portion, but it's representative of the larger community. We specifically took some of the feedback from that SIR. We wanted a platform that we could compare ourselves versus other communities, whether in the state or across the nation. We found Polco. They had that specific point. They're a very reputable company. They have a national community survey that they've been doing for many years, so the same questions are asked all across the nation, so we know how we compare. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jason if you want to start us off.
Sure, sounds great. I'm really happy to be here. Before I dive in, I just want to make sure you're able to see my screen and my slide deck.
Yes.
Okay, great. It sounds perfect. Okay, then, just before I begin, I would like to extend a thank you, another thank you to Tim, who was our primary contact throughout the survey development and implementation process. He was critical in putting the survey together, as well as the report that we shared and the slide deck that we brought through tonight. So with that, let's turn to a little bit about who we are before we look at the report and this presentation. So Polco is an online community engagement forum. We work with governments to provide them with resident and employee feedback. And as was said, we work with hundreds of organizations nationwide to help with strategic planning, empowering resident voices, and budgeting decisions. Polco merged with the National Research Center back in 2019. NRC is best known for our benchmarking surveys, like the National Community Survey, the National Employee Survey, the Community Assessment Survey for older adults, and a few others. NRC has actually been operating the National Community Survey since 1994, and we've worked with hundreds of jurisdictions nationwide. Through that work, we have actually built the largest benchmark database of local government public opinion in the United States. You can also see here that we partner and work closely with ICMA and the National League of Cities, as well as many other local government leaders, like the Alliance for Innovation, engaged local government leaders, and many academic partners, like the American Association for Public Opinion Research, the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and most recently, the Hoover Institute at Stanford University. So before looking at the results, I do want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that these results can be used. Most commonly, the jurisdictions that we work with will use their survey data to monitor trends in resident opinion over time and to help inform their budgeting processes. Our results also allow you to benchmark your community's specific characteristics and services against other communities found in our benchmark database. Ultimately, the hope tonight is that as these findings are presented, it's going to spur some ideas on where you might want to dig a little bit deeper. So the National Community Survey, or the NCS, is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey that allows municipalities to assess resident opinion about their local government and about their local communities. The NCS focuses on the livability of York County by categorizing survey questions into 10 main facets of community livability. You can see those facets shown on the slide here. These facets have been identified through extensive survey research as those that are most impactful to residents' overall quality of life. And as you know, the NCS also includes items within each of these 10 facets to provide a full picture of how residents feel about their community. And then finally, and maybe most importantly, these facets also tend to align with municipal departments, making it easy for county staff to quickly find the information that is most important to them and their day-to-day work in the final reported results. So all households within York County were eligible to participate in this most recent survey effort. A list of all households within the zip code serving York County was purchased based on updated listings from the United States Postal Service. Using the GIS boundary files that were provided by the county, addresses located outside of York County's boundaries were removed from the list of potential households to survey. And from that final list, 3,000 addresses were selected to receive the invitation. Those 3,000 randomly selected households began receiving mailings on April 17th, and the survey remained open for six weeks. The first mailing was a postcard inviting the household to participate in the survey online. The next mailing contained a cover letter with instructions, the five-page survey questionnaire, and a postage-paid return envelope. Both the postcard and the cover letter included a web link to give residents the opportunity to respond to the survey online should they so choose. A total of 440 completed surveys were received from these efforts, providing a response rate of 15% and a margin of error of plus or minus 4%. Go ahead. Yes, our standard return rate this year has actually been around 13%, but we typically see anywhere from 10% up to 18% to 20%, but very few outside of that band.
Okay. And Jason, when you get a moment, could you expand upon what a probability-based sample is? How did you determine how those 3,000 households?
Yes. Yes, so actually, all households within the county were eligible to be selected. So we used the most updated listing from the USPS, got all of the addresses within York County, and then Tim and the team provided the GIS boundary files, and we actually got the exact latitude and longitude of all York County households, and then randomly selected 3,000 of them. So it's very exacting. We have a known probability of being selected, which is why we can calculate that margin of error that you see on the screen.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. So once this selection was completed and we received the results back, those 440 responses, we compared the demographic profile of survey respondents to that of all adults within York County, and we weighted the final survey results. This weighting aligned with the most recent American Community Survey and the US Census. This is a survey research best practice, and overall helps to improve the representativeness of those final survey results. Now, you may have heard, in addition to this randomly selected probability sample of households, a link to an online, community-wide, open participation survey was also publicized by the county. That open participation survey was available to all county residents and became available on May 14th. That survey remained open for the final two weeks of data collection, and 140 responses were received there. The presentation and the report are based on 440 responses from the random sample mail -based survey, but those responses that we received, the 140 that we received to the open participation, are provided separately in the full report.
So there is a separate report that covers the open participation?
You get the complete set of frequencies available there, including demographic questions, custom questions, and our standard questions, yes.
Thank you.
Now, before we turn to an overview, I do want to just reiterate one more time that one of the major advantages of local governments participating in our community surveys is this opportunity to compare your ratings from your residents to those from communities across the nation. There are currently around 500 communities in our national database, so York County received comparisons to the entire national database, which I'll be referring to as national benchmarks, but also opted to receive a custom benchmark comparison to a subset of communities. This subset includes all other Virginia jurisdictions who have completed a similar community survey in the past three years. We'll talk about those parameters in more detail in just a few slides. So with that, let's turn to a high-level look at our survey results before we hit on some key findings. So in the survey, we have two questions that ask directly about those 10 facets of community livability. The first asks residents to rate the quality of each of those 10 facets. You can see here that 86% gave overall feelings of safety an excellent or good score. All of these items were in line with national comparisons. In addition, we ask a second question about these 10 facets of community livability, but this question is centered on how important residents think it is for the community to focus on these areas in the coming two years. Each of the percentages here show the total of respondents who rated the facet as an essential or very important area of focus for the county. So we asked both about the quality and the importance of each of these facets, and we use this to create the quality-importance matrix that you see on the slide now. We use this chart, which is also included in the report, to help determine which areas are of relatively higher importance and lower quality to residents, those with the largest gaps. So most items shown here, for most of them, the gaps are really small, meaning that the current quality of these facets is meeting the level of importance assigned by residents. For example, if we look at safety, that's identified as an essential or very important area of focus by 93% of respondents, while 86% give excellent or good marks to its current quality. Similarly, 88% identify the natural environment as an essential or very important area of focus, while 81% give positive evaluations of the current state of York County's natural environment. So this chart is just one of many ways to interpret your data, and it can be used, again, to help identify key findings, but more importantly, to help determine which areas may need additional focus or resource allocation in the coming years and which others are performing well by comparison.
Jason, what falls under the utilities umbrella?
So this is the overall rating of utility infrastructure in the county. There are a number of items that we ask, sub-questions that we ask, things like sewer services, garbage collection, stormwater management. There are seven items that we asked about in addition to the overall.
Utilities within the scope of the county, not, say, power, which is outside of the county's scope?
That's exactly right.
Just to quantify a little bit, some of them do bleed over because it's a national survey, so for instance, water is one of those. Now, we have Newport News Water Works, but that's still done through the county. So there is some crossover of.
Okay. Mr.? Okay.
So did they include, like, Dominion Power, or did they not?
Perfect. I'm going to move. Was there a question? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I've got it, Jason. So some of these were affordability of high-speed internet access, garbage collection, drinking water, sewer services, stormwater management, power utility, and utility billing.
That's all included in the, under utilities in here.
Correct. Those were all, and then they asked an overall, how happy are you with the quality and what's the importance? It's broken up on the survey itself. They're kind of grouped all together.
Okay, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
So in addition, we'll talk next about the benchmarking. So York County elected to compare their results, as I said, to a custom subset of communities from within that larger national database. This included other Virginia communities who have completed a community survey of their residents within the past three years, so everything happening in post-pulpit. A closer look at the 15 other Virginia communities shows York County near the median in terms of population and median household income. And our report here in our national database includes a good mix of large counties. So we have Loudoun County, we work with them very closely, Chesterfield County as well, mid-sized communities. We just wrapped up the NCS in Charlottesville and Lynchburg, and a few smaller jurisdictions like Vienna and Williamsburg. But you can see the full list here. When you see Virginia comparisons in the report and on the rest of the slides, this is the group that you're being compared against. So when compared against those Virginia communities, we have 123 survey items for which residents provided evaluative ratings. Of those 103 items.
Can I, can you go back to that previous slide, please, real quick?
Sure. Sorry, he went to an old version of the slide.
You don't have a copy of that.
Correct. I can get it to you afterwards.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. And if for some reason I keep going, just yell again. Sometimes I don't quite pick up on the comments, so thank you very much. When we're looking at these Virginia communities, we have 123 items that were asked across all of these communities. Of those 103 received ratings that were similar to York County's ratings, 12 of your ratings were higher than other Virginia communities, and five received lower ratings. A rating is considered similar if it's within 10 percentage points of the rolling average of these Virginia communities, and higher if it's more than 10% above, and lower if it's more than 10% below. Now again, of the 123 survey items for which residents provided evaluative ratings, 10 items received ratings that were higher than the national benchmark, 109 were similar, and four received lower ratings. We're going to move through the key findings next, and we're going to highlight a lot of these areas where York Counties were above and below these comparisons. Speaking of, we'll move into these key findings next. For the most part, the percentages that, oh, go ahead. Oh, maybe it was an echo. Sorry. The percentages that you're going to see presented here in the presentation and in the report are presented as a percent positive. Most commonly, this is going to mean that the percent positive is the combination of the top two most positive responses, like excellent or good, or very or somewhat safe. The percent positive grouping is going to be labeled on each of the subsequent slides. As you know, there's a lot of additional data in the full report that we won't cover today, like demographic or geographic comparisons, but the rest of this presentation is going to focus on a few areas that our data science and survey research teams thought were the most noteworthy within your results. So key finding number one, residents demonstrate strong satisfaction with the quality of life within the county. About nine in 10 residents rated York County as a place to live, a place to raise children, a place to retire, and the overall image or reputation of York County as excellent or good. Additionally, the overall quality of life rating was given an excellent or good rating from around 90%. The overall image or reputation ratings scored above both national and Virginia comparison communities, as did York County as a place to raise children and York County as a place to retire. In addition, around nine in 10 residents plan to remain in York County for the next five years and would recommend living in York County to someone who asked. Once again, each of those were higher than comparison communities in Virginia. Key finding number two, York County government ratings are in line with national and benchmark, and Virginia benchmarks. About two-thirds of residents rated treating residents with respect and treating all residents fairly as excellent or good, and over half of residents rated being honest, generally acting in the best interest of the community, and their overall confidence in York County positively. As you can see here, all of these governance ratings were similar to both the national and Virginia benchmarks that we see. Key finding number three, the community experiences consistently high levels of safety. About nine in 10 residents felt very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood during the day, in the downtown and commercial area during the day, and from violent crime. You can also see over eight in 10 residents felt very or somewhat safe from property crime and from fire, flood, or other natural disaster. Once more, common theme, these all were similar to our national benchmark. In addition to asking about feelings of safety, the NCS also asks about the current quality of safety services. So about nine in 10 residents rated fire services and ambulance or EMS services as excellent or good. Over eight in 10 rated police or sheriff services and crime prevention as excellent or good. You can see here that fire services and ambulance and EMS services were similar to the national benchmark, while police services and crime prevention ratings were higher than the national benchmark and the Virginia benchmarks. Key finding number four, the economy serves as a strength for York County, though housing affordability is identified as a concern. About eight in 10 residents rated York County as a, I'm sorry, about eight in 10 residents rated York County as a place to visit and the overall quality of business and service establishments as excellent or good. York County as a place to visit, you can see here, scored higher than national comparisons. About seven in 10 residents rated York County as an excellent or good place to visit, while over half of residents positively rated the variety of business and service establishments and the vibrancy of downtown and commercial areas. Now, we have affordability measures here on the screen as well, and although all affordability measures did score in line with our national averages, less than half of residents rated the cost of living, the availability of affordable quality childcare, the availability of affordable quality mental health services, and the availability of affordable quality housing as excellent or good. Key finding number five, ratings for alternative modes of transportation scored below comparison communities. About three in four residents expressed satisfaction with the overall ease of travel by car in the county, while about two-thirds rated the ease of public parking positively. Over half of residents were satisfied with traffic flow on major streets, while about one-third of residents expressed satisfaction with walking, and only one in five residents rated the overall ease of travel by bicycle positively. You can also see on the slide here, only 13% of residents were satisfied with the overall travel by public transportation. Each of these last three items you see on the slide scored below national and custom Once again, just like for safety, we also asked about mobility services within the county. In addition to those usage items, about two-thirds of residents expressed satisfaction with snow removal, traffic enforcement, and street cleaning. Over half of residents rated sidewalk maintenance and traffic signal timing positively. Each of the items you see on the slide here were similar to our national comparisons. And then key finding number six, library services and K-12 education receive high ratings from residents. So when looking at items related to education and the arts in York County, over eight in 10 residents gave excellent or good reviews to library services and K-12 education. A K-12 education scored above both national and custom benchmarks and was in the 80th percentile nationally and the 92nd percentile in our Virginia comparisons. Opportunities for education, arts, and the culture, and culture support for the arts, and adult educational opportunities were evaluated positively by 70%, 60%, and 50%, Now, in addition to the standard questions that are included on every national community survey, York County also included a few unique items, and we'll turn to those special topics So the first question that was included on the survey asked residents to indicate how positive or negative they thought the following changes had been for York County over the past five to 10 years. About eight in 10 residents positively viewed environmental preservation, that's 80%, saying that was a very or somewhat positive change, while around seven in 10 viewed residents viewed commercial development and population growth as a positive change in York County. Over half of residents viewed transportation infrastructure positively, while just 41% gave very or somewhat positive reviews to housing affordability in the county over the past five to 10 years. In addition to those past changes, we also asked about some future priorities. So we asked residents to rate how important, if at all, they thought it was for the county to focus on each of these following, each of the following in the next five to 10 years. The top five items include about eight in 10 residents rating the preservation of open space in environmentally sensitive areas and traffic flow, excuse me, traffic and roadway improvements as top priorities. You can also see here around three in four residents viewed housing affordability as essential or very important. And finally, about seven in 10 residents consider enhancing services for older adults and people with disabilities and access to affordable childcare to be top priorities for the county. And then finally, in our last question that we'll highlight here that was unique to York County, residents were asked to indicate their level of support for eight different approaches to economic development throughout the county. The top five items here include around nine in 10 providing strongly or somewhat supportive views for encouraging traditional neighborhood developments and improving utility and transportation infrastructure. Around eight in 10 showed support for fostering entrepreneurship and investing in workforce development, while over three-quarters saw increasing tourism or entertainment uses as a positive feature for economic development in the future. So here's a summary of our conclusions again that our data science and survey research teams.
Jason?
Yep, go ahead.
Put back a slide, please.
Of course.
Did, um, did your survey define what a traditional neighborhood development is?
Let me check here for you. Tim?
What is that definition?
No, I don't believe so.
SDRs or?
Well, Matt, I got a picture in my head what a traditional neighborhood development is, but it may not match what other people's are, so that's one.
Oh, bear with us. Okay, give me a second, I'm going to pull up the slides and.
Yeah, go back up.
You want to keep going with this?
I mean, it's running, they go home.
Okay, we gotta find where you want. Which one are you looking at? It's a topic, if you check them.
So indication of your support for economic development.
Yeah, my question was, it says encourage a traditional neighborhood development. I was wondering if that was defined in the question.
No. So it's very broad. What you try to do is you put out one blank question that they've gone across, and that depends on what their viewpoint is.
Well, when you put it out, what ones are you thinking about? I mean, just anything?
It's up to the citizens' interpretation.
Okay, so it's very subjective.
Yeah. Okay, so.
That doesn't answer the question.
Right, I mean.
What do you mean by?
Right, I mean, like I said, I got a picture in my head what a traditional neighborhood development is, but maybe somebody responding to their survey has a whole different idea what that looks like.
Correct. One of the benefits and negatives is there's so many questions already on the survey. There's over, I believe, 150 questions, so each one tries to get to the point, and they kind of gauge it so that people can quickly give a response to each section.
Right, I get it, can't get too far in the weeds, you'll never get through it, buddy.
One of the specific things open to this board is the tool of FlashBook. So if that was something particularly kind of of interest, we could dive into here some information and here's some quick questions specifically about it, and you could give a little bit more context to it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Kind of just picking up where he left for this bullet slide, which is the last one, summary of conclusions from our survey research and data science teams. Number one, residents demonstrate strong satisfaction with the quality of life in York County. Number two, York County government ratings are in line with national and Virginia benchmarks. Three, the community experiences consistently high levels of safety. Four, economy serves as a strength for York County, though affordability is identified as a concern. Five, ratings for alternative modes of transportation scored below comparison communities. And the last one, number six, library services and K-12 education receive high marks from residents. There's a lot more data available in the complete report of results, including demographic comparisons, there's dashboards, and additional custom questions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have. I just think this, this list of summary conclusions, we need to keep in front of us when we get to retreat or consideration of where we go in the future.
I mean, this, this is going to go a long ways to color in our comprehensive plan and so forth, where we focus our efforts and money, because keep safety up, keep education up, and continue to invest in that, you know.
Environmental interest, parks, services.
Yeah, it very closely aligns to your strategic priorities.
Does, yeah.
Very closely.
Yes.
Transportation is probably the one that jumps out of the page. I mean, it says we may have to do more.
Which, you know, is a bit of a conundrum for us, is, you know, the roads, and then you take a look at the way the county's laid out, long and narrow, you know.
It's difficult, that public transportation.
But still, that means it's good feedback, and there's probably opportunities where we can, looking to do some things. And again, when people ask, public transportation, do they mean, when we were presidents, do they mean bus rights, you know, what do they mean by that?
Well, I also think you're right. It aligns with our priorities, but also going back, looking at what past ones that we've done. It reinforces what we've heard before, so that the county's on the right path.
Yeah, and I like the comparisons that we did. That was a good inclusion, although, I don't know how comparing us against Leaven County or whatever that, maybe 427,000 people, that's a whole different piece, but it's good to have a level set on when we fall there, and it sounds like we're pretty good shape, so.
And in the details of the specific survey for mobility, it actually dives into sidewalks versus bus transportation. There's a lot of granularity, and then you also have demographic information, so if that's something of appeal or interest, there's a lot of...
That'll be helpful, yeah, okay.
Mark says I can't dive into statistics, or we don't get...
No, you're not.
But I did some offline calculations, and this 440 responses is certainly significant enough to call this a statistical standard.
Yeah.
It was a lot of work.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for all that you've done.
One of the things they have on here, it's kind of interesting that it always comes up as affordability housing, okay? Now, if you think back over the last 30, 40 years, every time we built a neighborhood, I remember when, when it's a TAB, it's supposed to be affordable housing, okay? And now the housing prices there are above $500,000, $600,000. So you build a neighborhood, I don't care where you build it in this county, it ceases to be affordable. I mean, it buys it by most affordability standards, because you have to have a job, a pretty good paying job, or some way to gain... If you think about, what are we, interest rates about 6.6% somewhere near today, and our mortgage, and then you're coming in, and a house, it's, we've got a brand-new neighborhood that's going up in our area celestial way, and the houses are selling up to $749,000. I mean, that's a hell of a monthly payment.
It's an awful lot, starting house, it's not a star of a house.
There's also supply and demand equation as well, because you got nine out of 10 people will recommend York County as a place to come live, so that's going to drive demand. You know, so that's part of the factor.
Well, that's a huge part of the factor, because everybody wants to come here because of the education system. And they come in here, and the education system leaves greater safety, less crime, basically overall, a better quality of life, and it's just, you know, it's just a formula that seems to be working in York County forever, as long as we keep focusing on it.
Any other comments on this topic?
Good effort, appreciate the work you put into it, Tim.
Yes, thank you to Tim, and planning and development staff as well, as well as the senior team spent quite a bit of time on it.
Well, it shows, and I appreciate it very much.
I find that this study is in line, Sheila. This study is in line with many of the studies we've seen in the past.
Well, that's what I said, it just reinforces that we're in on the right path. I think that makes everybody feel a lot better. The next one we're going to be talking about is the Strategic Capital Plan for wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. John, thank you so much for coming to do it for the board tonight.
One last comment.
Yes.
If we were to repeat this in two years' time, that feels like about the right frequency. Just, I think...
Do you think every two years is enough, or every...
Two or three years, I think you want at least once during your term.
We talked about it, we thought two years was...
Every two years?
Two years is recommended.
So what does this survey cost?
I want to say about $20,000 at all.
Not much. It's in the neighborhood, but I think it was a little bit more.
That's a reasonable amount, so I think you're right, every two years. Good idea.
Gives us a good benchmark, our way through reach.
Your turn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good evening, this is Noel, members of the board. I appreciate having another opportunity to talk to you about the Strategic Capital Plan. Just have a couple slides for you, and then we'll get into comments, discussion, feedback. Before diving into the presentation, I'd like to thank a few staff members. This wasn't just me, it was a series of folks from all kinds of departments across the county. For utilities, we had Travis Rhodes, Joe Schusler, Tim Worthing, and Mike Phelan. For facilities engineering, we had Beth Martsgen, who is here. Caleb Seegers, Marcella Geraldo. Stormwater, we had Joe Brogan, Robert Walters, who is here as well. Kent Hinkle and Charles White. From grounds, Josh Loudon, Barrett Nix. Planning, Caitlin Olllett, and she is here as well. Infrastructure management, which works under IT, we have Ellen Medford and Jen Wilson. For GIS, we had Nick Gibbs. And then PW, Public Works Admin, did a lot of help with all the administrative tasks, surveys, things of that nature, putting books together. And we had Lynn Mettler, Lindsey Steven, Kathy Bishop, Mary Ellen Haywood, and Brenda Farmer. So a lot of folks contributed to getting this plan together and where we are at this point, essentially.
That's quite a list of people. But then there was a lot of work that went on to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
Very thorough.
So what we're asking for is essentially the adoption of the capital plan. What I'll do is I'll just briefly review the timeline we've gone through from start to finish, talk about why we're doing the plan. Key changes from this one to the last plan 15 years ago. We'll briefly review funding, and then any questions you might have. So it's been quite a long process. We started this whole thing almost a year and a half ago. Like I said, the previous plan had been conducted about 15 years ago. So we only had about one or two staff members that were even tangentially involved in, you know, constructing that plan. So it was a bit of a learning curve to try and get to where we thought we needed to be, and go through a thorough process, essentially. And we learned a lot about timing of when to do this, in the future as well. We got wrapped in the budget season on the front end and the tail end, so that's why it's taken quite a while to get back to you with, you know, a plan, you know, the third or fourth draft version of this thing to where we are right now.
How often, now that you've done it once, how often do you think you need to do this?
Probably three to four years.
Three to four years.
Every three to four years, probably.
Probably three years.
Is what I would recommend.
And during that time, you have accomplished some of your projects?
Theoretically, yes.
Sorry, go ahead, sorry.
So like I said, we started beginning last calendar year, we worked our way through. The stars indicate touchpoints I've had with the board. About 10 months ago, I briefed the board with the initial, hey, this is what we're going to kind of do, this is what we're looking at. You gave initial feedback and guidance, and I had the opportunity in the one-on-ones during, right before summer kicked off, to talk to each one of you in detail about thoughts, feelings, on where we were. And then, you know, we are where we are, where we are right now, at the very bottom there. Hopefully, we'll get to have this adopted tonight. So it has been a long process, and like I said, multiple staff members, opportunities for feedback back and forth along the way. But we have learned a lot this go-around, and I think we'll be well-prepared for the next version of this thing. Okay, so the purpose of the plan, like I said, all of you have seen this before, I just want to review it really quickly. Essentially, what we're trying to get at is to align our priorities of work for the staff with the priorities of work for the board itself, as much as we can, essentially. A lot of times, we have discussions about individual projects, but we rarely get the opportunity to talk collectively about sewer line extensions, stormwater projects, transportation projects. So it provides an opportunity to touch base with the board, have interactions, and try and align what we're doing as a staff with what the board wants us to do as well. So align those priorities. I did some calculations, and in the 35 years we've used this plan since 1990, we've had about $250 million of, that's nominal value, so non-inflation adjusted, of sewer extension, stormwater, and water projects that have come from this process, essentially. So it's a pretty big dollar figure, and if you adjusted that for inflation, it's probably twice that. But what the plan is not, essentially, it's not to determine the full project scope, so a lot of this is conceptual. What we have are dollar figures based on preliminary engineering estimates. So in certain cases, some of these things might not even be feasible to do, sidewalk projects, sewer extensions, things of that nature. And when you look at the costs that are in the plan, that's a fixed point in time. So essentially, most of the costs in here are from a year ago. So you're already talking more dollars right now as we sit here. And then the final point is, this is not to determine funding solution. This helps us develop the CIP, essentially. And that's an annual basis that we'll come to you and figure out how we fund, and put these projects in the CIP in time and space to afford, essentially. So key changes. We did remove water projects, so the county no longer provides water. All that was turned over about 10, 12 years ago. Most of it went over to Newport News Water Works, so no more water projects in this plan. We did add active and vehicular transportation. Within the last 10 years, especially on the active transportation side, we've had a lot of projects, a lot of interest from folks, so it made sense to kind of throw this in the plan itself, so we can go through categorize. I think we have about 70 or 80 conceptual projects. Obviously, that's a bit much the handle, so we nicked that down. And on the next slide, I'll show you all the projects that we have in there.
What do you mean by active transportation?
So active is sidewalks, multipurpose trails, crosswalks.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, yes. So those were added for this version of the plan. And we did look at all the evaluation criteria, and we did some revisions to them. It's been 15 years, like I said, so there are some things that are more important that weren't as important back then. Costs is a big thing. Costs to do anything are significantly more expensive. And then, just a rebranding of the plan from the utilities capital plan to the strategic capital plan. So this is what we ended up with. We tried to keep it between 10 and 20 projects in each category. So after multiple revisions or adds, deletes, this is kind of what we ended up with. We had 18 sewer line extension projects, nine stormwater, and then 16 sidewalks, eight crosswalks, and 13 vehicular projects. If you add up the total value or estimated cost of these projects, we're at $170 million. So it's a pretty big price tag, which is why we need to be careful and very deliberate about how we plan, and synchronize, you know, our efforts first.
CIP, no.
CIP, all that kind of stuff. So it's a huge dollar tag that we can't afford to pay for, which is why you see, some of this stuff might get in, some of it might not, based off things that are already in the CIP, and, you know, how much money we have to be able to spend.
That's wishful thinking.
Yes, ma'am. And just to finish off, this is a refresher for everybody in the room. I think most, we've talked about this multiple times. How are these projects funded? So sewer line extensions, we have, it is an enterprise fund. We get user and connection fees, so our bi-monthly billing is the bulk of that. There is a meals tax portion of that, 50% is shared between stormwater and sewer line, or sewer in general, and then there's bonds and grants. So I will tell you, we are going through a sewer rate study right now, the first time the county's done that. So we're looking at everything, not only what we think the rate needs to be, but whether or not we should change, we have a flat rate right now, so we're looking at whether or not, what the options are for consumption-based billing as well, which is kind of the trend now.
Yes, I saw that was the case.
So we'll have more information to present to you towards, I think, the end of the calendar year on that, and it should be able to influence how we develop the CIP for the cycle as well. And then stormwater projects, we do not have a stormwater fee, so what we pay for that is through the share of the meals tax for the capital projects, grants, our operations arm of stormwater is paid through via the general fund. And then transportation's general fund, and then we have various state and federal grants that we get for transportation. And any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Yeah, too. Any recommendations on the stormwater fee?
So we've...
To cover the requirement.
We've taken a preliminary look at that, very preliminary. And I think, I'd have to refer back to the document, but I think we had, to cover our expenditures right now, it's hovering between $5 to $10, I think, a month, would be what we would need to transition that into essentially a enterprise fund. And those were very rough at order estimates.
Per household.
They're per household capital.
It's per household.
Okay. Enterprise funds typically are subscription-based, like trash.
So essentially, it'd be based off, the way normal municipalities do it is you have a baseline ERU or equivalent residential unit. So the residential fee would be associated with one ERU, so it'd be a fixed rate for what an ERU is. Commercial would be based off the total impervious area, so roof lines, pavements. So that'd be calculated based off the average residential square footage.
Sewer is not optional.
To use your right, that's exactly what I was getting ready to say, to use your terminology.
I said sewer, sewer, you have to connect sewer.
You do.
Subscription leads one to believe we have the option, a yea or nay. But not in the sewer fund. Now, we do with waste management.
Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
So, yes, we'd have to talk about what your desire for that program would be.
Generally, it's mandatory.
Stormwater, yes.
Okay, you said two different things. Stormwater is not mandatory. We could make it mandatory because of the large projects.
Right.
Okay, but in the past, we've covered million-dollar projects without doing that. But there was always a big question is whether, based on, I haven't looked at all the projects, but based on the projects that we needed yet, considering the environmental impact we're getting from homes now being actually built in what I consider questionable areas, that we may, that may be a requirement. We get doing a lot of stream restorations now, right? We're planning to do them. So those things, that's another impact. And I don't know, you said like $10 per household, to do what?
I'd have to refer back to the memo we did, but I think it was around $10, $5 to $10 to cover expenditures on the operations side and the capital side of what we're currently spending.
For, is that just stormwater?
That's just for stormwater.
Seriously? Wow, that's a whopping increase. You said, I remember we used to talk about 50 cents or something like that, you know.
So you figure, on the operations side, I think it's normally around $600,000, $700,000 just for operations. And then I think on the capital side, it's generally between $2 and $3 million a year, meals tax contribution portion.
For stormwater?
For stormwater.
What are we getting into here?
So I had a follow-up to that question. And this leads me to question, are, do we need to relook at our ordinances or our building codes? Because more and more of these construction projects that we're approving, we end up with stormwater projects about 10 years later, more or less. And it's, as you said, they're being built in more difficult areas. The amount of impervious soil is forcing a lot more water down these drains. And it just seems to me that we're getting nailed after the fact by developments that come along and create challenges for us.
It's a fact, I can just flat tell you, it's a fact. If you go between 2000 and 2010, on one project called the Morris Creek Project, we spent $6 million to fix it.
The question is, is there something we need to be doing differently in terms of building codes to address that challenge? Because it's getting worse.
If you were to look, I would say, I've heard this, but I don't believe it. It says that if today's standards for development were in place when Running Man was being built, half Running Man would not be built. But I don't believe that. And the reason I don't believe that, because I look at celestial, the new celestial neighborhood, and it's on the worst piece of property that you can build a house on, okay? I mean, they've put in some incredible conduits and stuff like that, but it's where the major flood point was in 1997, so I don't know if...
That new development is in a flood plain?
No, it's right down, it's right down... It's right down, it's right down, well, it's the flood plain. It's where, in nineteen ninety-seven, we had twenty inches of rain in twenty-four hours. People up at thirty-one feet sea level, above sea level, were up to their hips waiting out into the street. And that outflow is now where this new neighborhood's built, okay? And I questioned that from the get-go. The Army Corps of Engineers held off, and VDOT will not approve half the streets in there. They're now having to be privately owned because they won't meet the drainage standards, as I understand it. So you're right. I don't, and I don't know if it's going to get worse. Not in my district, it might get worse up in your district.
It'll get worse in mine.
But we've already seen some, so what happens if you don't pay attention to the water flow? So the question, it comes up with a question, you know, what are we buying into?
Sewer goes in though, doesn't it, and the new developments?
The new developments, yes.
And the new developments, yes.
The stormwater I'm talking about, that's what's really got me worried. Because we're spending more and more and more each year on stormwater repair.
So you're saying we're spending about six hundred, six hundred thousand a year?
For just the operations arm, it's between six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
The operations, meaning we're having to clean up or maintenance.
That's maintenance of existing easements and.
Six hundred thousand a year for maintenance.
And there are some small projects they do, but that's six, seven hundred thousand from the general fund.
I think digging a ditch would be just good enough, but I guess not. And a lot of the BMPs, we don't own really any of the BMPs, those are owned by the homeowner associations.
There's about, I think, four or five hundred BMPs total in the county. About seventy of them are our responsibility to maintain.
I remember, now I'll go back a little history. I remember about fifteen years ago, the staff looked at what it would cost. We were trying to determine what it would cost, the county took over all the BMPs.
Yes, sir.
The one BMP we looked at was about four million dollars. There's no way we're going to take over those, okay? So the homeowner association, so the best we can do is.
The homeowners association is supposed to collect money from their residents to cover the costs of it and never put enough money into it.
Opposed to in doing or two different things. But the point is, the county, you know, we don't go out and take care of the BMP. What we do is, we have a drainage easement through across the BMP. Great example is Wood Lake Crossing, Ten Acre Lake, okay? Everybody's going, how much is it going to cost to drain, I mean, to dredge a ten-acre lake? Well, we did an estimate back in about nineteen ninety-six, and it was like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? They'd been collecting, they'd already been collecting for a ton of years, and there wasn't enough money. So the county has a ten-foot easement, and I told citizens, I said, what? If that lake fills up with dirt, and it will fill up eventually in a million years or so, but when it fills up, the only thing the county's going to do is go in and clean ten feet across the center of that lake. That's all we're going to do. And that's the same thing if you go over to some of the other neighborhoods. So the reality of the drainage problem is, you know, again, what are we actually buying into? What are we buying into? I mean, we got, if we have a subdivision coming in, and I guarantee you, every, I don't care if it's me or whoever the supervisor is going to be at the time, and they can be warned about the flooding issues, drainage issues, they're going to be knocking on your door, okay? They're going to be knocking on your door, just get it fixed, right? Even, I mean, it's just the way it's going to happen. So we have to be really careful what we're buying into here.
Do you ever feel for how much of the stormwater projects are being driven by developed neighborhoods and neighborhoods that are going to be developed versus single-family lots?
I can ask Robert to help out or Rob, but I think most of them are related to TMDL, total maximum daily load points that we have to, we have requirements from the state.
Right, so there's a couple of things going on. In nineteen seventy-two, something called the Clean Water Act was enacted by the EPA. And basically, what it did is it passed the administration for stormwater on down to the state, and they in turn pass it on down to the local municipalities. So we have to get an MSBOR permit for inspections. We do total daily maximum load, which is, when you think of it, we're talking about developments. But when you, the average person, they're leaking oil, the fertilizer on the curb and the sidewalk wall that goes in the stormwater system goes right into the York River, right into the James River. So over times, it's changed title some, but they'll put on requirements to move so much pollutants. You get points from the York, you get points from the James. The last time it was retitled, it was on Swift. They call it the Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow. Some things changed. And we are ahead right now of the curve for the twenty-eight removal of the pollutants.
That's because we got credits.
Yes, we did. And then there's going to be a beyond twenty-eight, they'll reset the goalpost, and we get a lot of it through SLAF grants. So a lot of it is, where can we capture SLAF grant money, fix a problem that we know exists, get some points, you know, for our program? And then some of it was, when Celestial Way was going to be developed, there was, you know, a lot of talk with the administration then of, we need to do something to try to keep the homes from flooding. And at the end of the day, they're going to call it public works. So there was a scramble there. So I think that answers your question.
It doesn't, it doesn't. You know, do we need to be putting more work into our codes?
Well, that's something we'd have to explore. We can talk about codes and that, but, you know, part of the problem is mandates from the federal government saying you will remove. So you've got a couple of different things.
Think about the question this way. What would you change in the county code to minimize the number called out to public works to come address issues at Celestial Way or any other development?
Tranquility or.
That might be a better one.
Maybe, but just going back to your comment about, if they flood, they're going to call it public works. Like, what could be done now to mitigate?
Here's the other thing. So if you buy, Robert might, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you can buy a piece of property at Bay Tree Beach, and when they come, they'll get a permit to build the wall around the home, and they're going to put the home there. It's going to flood on Bay Tree Beach Road.
The bigger, one of the bigger issues that tied to this, okay? When they first built BMPs, or even just ponds today, they built PMPs, they were designed for one purpose only. And that was to catch phosphates, which I thought was just kind of a stupid thing because there's just phosphates all over the place that are natural in the soil. But everybody was thinking, oh, they throw them fertilizer out, that's where all the phosphates coming from. No, that's not true. So that was it. That was the whole standard for a BMP was to dig a hole and it would catch the phosphates. So then they got wise to this, and they said, okay, it'll be phosphates, nitrates, and sediment. Those are the three, those are the three lines. And you have to, based on your shoreline and a few other weird rules, they came up with the total maximum daily load, okay? What'd you find out? Virginia Beach has a lower standard than we have in York County because they have less exposure to Chesapeake Bay than we do, okay? And the cost, if we looked at the estimates about ten years ago, maybe fifteen years ago, it's a hundred million dollars. It was almost, at that time, it was almost going to be bigger annually than our budget, all right? So then, that's when they came up with the idea of credits, okay? We started getting credit for all the work we used to do. And if you go look at the new BMPs built today, they're built with a lot of riprap laid up on the front. They got flow in, flow out, and there's a lot of the homeowner associations, Running Man's a great example, six hundred homes, and they got a BMP, one big BMP, or a sort of a BMP, they put a period in, that the only thing they're required to do is just dredge out the front part of the pond that's where the sediment sits. They dredge it out and dump it on the, up on the bank. That's all they got to do, okay? They don't have to go drain anything. And Running and Wood Lake Crossing has no requirement to drain anything out of the Ten Acre Lake. So new ones now are getting more and more of this. So the question for us, kind of goes back to your point was, and your point about the code, which we don't even have the authority to do.
We may not.
I mean, we don't have the authority to restrict development of property in that way. We can put zoning on it, okay? But the Corps of Engineers, when they get the blessing of the Corps of Engineers, man, all we got to do is we just step back because there's nothing more we can do unless we're going to try to fight it. And that's just not going to work. So I think the issue, if Bay Tree Beach, a great example, you build that at Bay Tree Beach, you better be building it so the house is six feet or nine feet above sea level. You got, your driveway is under your house because it's going to be elevated. And we went and got grants, and we did, what, six homes? I think about six, five, six homes was a nightmare, okay? But we finally got them jacked up, and we're seeing that down at the coast and along the coast. So the problem is, I come back to drainage, okay? What are we buying into? What, these projects you got listed here, we're going to talk about the things we use see from the engineering perspective that we need to address, right?
Yes.
And so that's what the here and now is, right? Did you, did you look at anything that might be related to what we're doing in the future as far as putting houses in around these things?
I'll let Robert or Rob explain as far as the rationale for the stormwater.
So you were talking about BMPs earlier in the fact that they were. Sorry, what?
Go ahead.
I just didn't want to stand here. You need the microphone, okay.
Go ahead.
So we were talking earlier about how BMPs were initially integrated into the system to manage phosphates, nitrates, and sediment. They also have a quantity factor. So when new developments are proposed nowadays, they have to do a quantity control on the water leaving the development during storm events. And in most cases, we follow the state code, which is they have to manage it to at or below pre-development conditions with a maximum hold of, it can't be more than a reduction past if the site had been entirely forested before it was developed. So a lot of these projects that we've been doing are in areas that had been previously developed years and years ago where they didn't have these requirements at the time, and therefore, we're mitigating for those issues. Most of the projects are not coming near or close to newer developments, at least in my experience thus far. It's more in older developments where the situations have been allowed to worsen over time, such as Queens Lake, such as Brightwood and areas like that.
Okay, so are we retrofitting in our plan here? Is this going to be a retrofit of the stormwater?
A lot of this is essentially a retrofit. It's areas that weren't planned or mitigated for in the past because the requirements didn't exist. So now we're essentially retrofitting them, one, to meet our TMDL action plan, and two, to protect property in the areas that are affected by that.
All right, so what you just told me makes a lot of sense. And that comes, that goes back to my comment fifteen years ago when it was a hundred million dollars. Now I know where the hundred million is going, is going in retrofit. So it's not a whole lot that we can do because eventually, that's going to be a federal mandate on us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? If not, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Thanks, John.
You're not going to go over the projects, you're not going to go over these projects?
I wasn't going to go in line, but if you have questions about any of them.
Well, I think it's important, guys, this is going to be really important.
Go ahead.
If you're not in agreement with this, you've prioritized the projects, right?
We have, yes, sir.
Yes. So while everybody's sitting here, I want to see what some of these priorities are, especially in stormwater involving Big Bethel Road.
We've been through this twice previously.
Yeah, we did it in a kind of, you know, Texas wind, or Kentucky winded shear. I want something because, yeah. Some of these projects have been hanging out here.
Which ones are you looking at, Tom?
What are you looking at, stormwater?
Stormwater extension projects. We've got Big Bethel Road here, seven million dollars. I mean, if you look at like, we've had like Lights Faulkner, okay, seventeen million. What's the other one?
We're doing that now.
Central Ross Colony. Big Lake, that was like.
Twenty million dollars.
It was like nineteen million dollars down there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And because we went to all those years, we really pushed off a lot of the things that people have been really, this is on page eight of one hundred and sixty-one.
You're on sewers.
Yeah.
You said stormwater.
I said stormwater.
I'm sewer, I just shifted.
You're a sewer, okay. Sewer, so page eight, okay. Bruce, page eight.
It was on stormwater.
Yes, so was I.
All right.
Page eight, here we go.
Sewage system, to me, is a critical one, all right? Because it involves a couple of other things. One, it's going to be really expensive, all right? And this is a project that's been sitting out there. I've been promising people we're going to take care of this thing for over twenty years.
Which one are you talking about, what's your number?
The Big Bethel Road.
Number seven.
Big Bethel, oh, seven, seventeen.
And so, I mean, how many more years are we going to have to wait on this thing, right? This is, I mean, this is, these people have been waiting for the sewage.
But their criteria that they follow, that they judge all of these before they do it.
No, it's not the problem. What they did is they shifted the, they shifted this list around, okay? And he did it because, what's the, you did it on affordability, right? I know, yeah, I know exactly what it is. And they shifted this, and he made it so they go down there and take care of some of these other areas. I'm not sure what lots drive, what is that?
That's right off of Goodwin neck. There's a small abortion at the very end of that that doesn't have sewer, but by Harley Davidson.
Yeah, it's because these bigger projects have gone in and sucked up all the money up in Queens Lake and.
You're right.
Words White Faulkner, that's up in District One also, right?
That's by dot RV, between dot RV and the railroad tracks on seventeen. Everything to the left, seventeen.
That's District One, right?
It's District Two.
Two and three.
Two and three, yeah.
So that's like thirty-six million dollars worth of projects for the last twenty years. So my point is, we need to get Big Bethel Road moved up. I mean, enough's enough. These people have been sitting down there for too long, waiting for this project to go on. In fact, Mr. Brown is what's, it's not in Big Bethel Road, it's close to it over the old, behind the old Dairy Queen. He was the guy that came up with the idea that we could pay in advance, you know? You could go and put like a saving deposit, you just put money in to pay for your sewer when the connection fees come up. Now, the connection fees in those days were around four thousand dollars, maybe three thousand eight hundred. I don't know what they are now.
Thirty-seven.
Okay, so they haven't moved much.
They haven't moved, I'm like, okay, twenty years.
All right, all right. So at least that part's going in. We're not advertising it enough, I think, for folks that we get invited to say, you know, Merry Christmas. You now got to put in a sewer line.
I guess what I want to ask is how long have the ones prior to Big Bethel been on the list?
And if you look at the, if you look at the first column, NRS mean they weren't on the previous plan fifteen years ago. If they do have a number next to them, that means they, that's what they were ranked back in two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Fifteen years ago.
Right. So fifteen years they've been waiting, these people also.
Oh, longer than that, longer than that, okay? Now, the only, I'll give one caveat, I was going to shoot myself in the foot on this. Okay, when you list this prioritization, what did you base it on?
It's based off the criteria that's on the left side here.
Okay, and that's the one that's been, been, been in effect for a while?
We did add, we did add one key thing on there, it was cost per unit, is part of the criteria now.
I mean, I appreciate, I can really appreciate what you've done here, prioritize it, make it, you know, make sense. But I could tell you, I know the fact that this was laid out based on money affordability. It's based on affordability. And it's time for these people on Big Bethel Road to get their sewer.
So, Mr. Shepherd, I think if you have the agreement of the board, I'm pretty sure John would be happy to rearrange the schedule for you.
This is essentially a suggestion based off a criteria that was, it's a staff suggestion, so everything's, like I said, this was done about a year ago too, so.
I'm playing favorites, I'm getting tired, I'm getting tired of the game we're having to play here because we're not pulling enough money on our, on our enterprise fund to pay for these things.
So then I might suggest something else to you. Teresa, you might want to comment on this. So we are in the middle of a rate study. And part of that rate study is also going to look at our borrowing and how that might fit in our CIP plan. So what we might want to do is pause and wait until the rate study, and John said earlier. So what we might wanna do is pause and wait until the rate study, and John said earlier that they thought he would be able to present it to you before the end of the year, which you might wanna do is pause and see what capacity we have to move these pieces around.
Okay, that makes sense. My goal would be within the next three years. I mean, I'm giving, I mean, that, that's as long as I can wait without standing on top of this table screaming at everybody, but the thing is, is enough.
He was under the table last meeting.
The chair works this time, right? Okay, you made your point, thank you.
All right, I'm okay with that.
I think we're okay with that approach, but I think we leave it to the CIP discussion and can raise it at that time.
But thank you for raising the point. I'm gonna move now to the consent calendar. Uh, the first one is approval of minutes, that's number three. Number four is the employee of the quarter, second quarter of twenty twenty-five. Uh, number five is the strategic, strategic capital plan, waste, war, storm, water transportation, which we heard hopefully that passes. Uh, six is to authorize participation in nationwide opioid settlement with the Sackler family. That was an interesting reading one. And that's it. Does anybody have any that they'd like to pull for, for the discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I wanted to ask a question on the opioid discussion.
Yes, that was, that was an interesting one to read. We're not gonna get that much money.
Mr. Hill, I think probably can answer.
Mr. Hill, would you please?
Depends on what the question is, but yes.
What's the question?
Well, it just, it appeared to be a fairly small amount of money that York County receives. Is that in line with what we have seen in terms of costs?
So we, this particular settlement, and then there's another one coming up at the next meeting in two weeks. This is with the Sackler family, you may have read all the news, the Purdue Pharma. This is the family that owned the company, has arrived at a separate settlement apart from Purdue, which is doing their, their own bankruptcy, so their settlement's through bankruptcy. We are locked in because when this initially came about, the opioids, a, a number of localities, you may recall, we had this discussion when we joined our own insulin lawsuit. A number of localities, um, did, did their own, initiated their own litigation and then the state of Virginia tacked on top of that their own litigation on behalf of all the localities in Virginia. So several localities, for instance, Wise County gets a significantly larger portion than we do, which makes sense at some level because their, the costs and the, what they've incurred because of the opioid crisis is significant. We get a portion that was set as part of the original settlement agreement, that's the portion that we're going to get in every settlement that we get through these opioid settlements that we get as part of the state. And the reason why we are asked every single time is because they need every locality to approve it to maximize the amount. So I think Sam had prepared some basic numbers. It looks like, you know, the total we're gonna get over sixteen payments, and this is not exact, it depends on how many localities participate, but somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars spread out over that time, and then you add that to all the other opioid settlements we've made with all the other companies, you know, and it, it adds up eventually, even though we do have a smaller percentage than, than some. So the answer to your question is, it probably doesn't fully compensate and mitigate us any more than it does any locality, but it's a, it's a product of the, the way that we chose to go about participating in these settlements more than anything else that dictates how much money we're getting.
Fair enough, thank you.
Number six.
Did you move the?
No, I'm on, okay.
Question?
Number six, I got a question.
Number six, oh, thank you.
That is number six.
That's, that's number six, as he was talking about.
Which one is a plan?
The opioid.
Okay.
So what's your question?
Okay, number five. All right, so.
Number five?
So we approve this, what are we approving? What are we voting on approving here on number five?
This plan.
We just had this discussion.
We had the discussion, but we, but, but just because we approved the plan as it stands today doesn't mean that we cannot come back into it and make an adjustment if, if it warrants an adjustment.
So.
But basically, we're approving the plan as it stands today.
We're, we're updating it.
Updating it. But that doesn't mean we can't update it down the road a little more. You've, you've made the point.
We're gonna keep this thing alive, I don't wanna.
We're looking at it and we're thinking about it, but not tonight.
So what happens if we don't approve this plan? You guys stop doing stuff? So I'm not gonna support this until we get, we get the final word on it. This plan.
It's gonna be at the end of the year.
Plan, well, okay, wait till the end of the year, this trap plan's okay, and I think it looks really good, except it's got Big Bethel, Big Bethel Road in the wrong place, okay? And if you want to move it up now, I'll go along with that, as a plan.
No, I'm not gonna go along with that, they look at it.
We've already had this discussion, yeah. Well, when we have a look at it, then I'll come back and, I'll work on this plan. I'm not gonna support a plan, I mean, now that they've got this big hole in it.
So we brought the plan to you because this is the way the original plan was approved as well.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't like the way the original was planned either.
It hasn't worked out too bad.
Sir, sir, so this might help some, so it's, it's basically for us to get guidelines with the board's direction. So that's a loose plan, how we rated, um, and, and you guys were involved with that with, with John and all his one-on-ones. However, each year the CIP is gonna move forward, so you're gonna see what's next year and you're gonna see the out years, and then ultimately, at the end of the day, you'll see this stuff on a consent calendar and you'll, you know, you have the ultimate control, you do.
I, 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 I hear that, okay? But we're talking, at the end of this year, you're gonna come back with something that we can discuss this and, and make this plan, fine tune the plan, I guess, right? Okay?
We want better projections as far as what we can do with the sewer fund based off the sewer rate study.
You know, I build a plan, I build a plan, you in the army, you know, when you build a plan, it's only good to contact anyway, right? Well, I made contact here, all right? And that's why you're having a problem with me. Um, because I've gone along too many decades here, waiting for this thing to sort its way out. So I'm trying to think what's, what's the most palatable way of doing this. I'm not gonna approve this like it is. I mean, you know, we can, we not bring, we got it and say, oh, yeah, it looks okay, but we'll bring it back when we finalize it in the year.
What, what, what's your major hangup?
I had your hangup.
The order of prioritization with the sewer?
He's blackmailing us, is what he's doing.
I beg your pardon? What?
Well, Tom.
I'm fighting for my constituents.
I understand you're fighting for your constituents and we already talked about looking at it when the CIP comes up and towards the end of the year to see what money that we have available and we can massage it. But right now, I think the staff has put in a lot of time in, into this and I think we can go ahead and approve it and as any plan can be adjusted because it's a living plan. So we can adjust it when the time comes, but I think we need, bottom line is to approve it tonight and I'm gonna ask them to please move it.
I'm gonna pour perfume on this pig and then say it's okay, all right? I'm not. It's not doing what I want it to do and it's supporting, for me and my district, to support my people, okay? And I don't think anybody in this county should be treated that way. That's why I'm pretty upset by this because I've waited too many decades to get this damn thing fixed.
So this thing you're talking about is the, uh, Big Bethel Road?
Right.
Project.
Right.
So, so your, your contention is mainly that it's not prioritized higher than what you.
There's always been an excuse, push Big Bethel Road down the road, okay, so to speak. And I'm just tired of it.
But is that list, is that list that you shared?
Has it been pushed down the road or has it always been where it is?
Is that in list of prioritization or is that, does that just capture what's on your roadmap?
It, it is a prioritization list as a starting point, it's not necessarily the final, it's how we kinda look at, in time and space, where we can put things in the CIP. But like I said, the sewer rate study is gonna paint a picture of what we can afford. I don't have that complete picture yet.
You don't have the big picture because he just gave us an option for more affordability. That's what, that's what Teresa's gonna go look at.
Yes, sir.
So.
So, so my takeaway on, on what I saw on that list was, these are the projects that you, you and your team have identified that we need to address in the county, then we as a board and staff need to figure out in which order we, we do that. Two of them are already in process, those are the ones that are Starfords, White's Faulkner and Springfield Road. As far as the rest of them, whether it be Big Bethel, Old Dare Road, Lost Drive or whatever, with some guidance from your department and what we need to take care of, to do for our constituents, then we're gonna dictate, all right, what comes next. After Springfield Road, what comes next and whatever comes next after that. My, my takeaway wasn't, was we're approving, it's gonna be this list and we'll never get to Big Bethel Road because it's so far, so far down the list. That wasn't my takeaway. But if, if you're reading it as that's, that's the order and we'll never get to it, then that's probably is a, probably is a problem, but.
Yeah, and it's, and it's.
But that wasn't my read.
It's sorta like what I've been looking at here for, again, for over twenty years and I, and I, I was always, one reason after another, we kept pushing it and, and, you know, there's a point, okay, I mean, I, I think I promised these guys that we would have had a sewer almost, you know, five, six, seven years ago and, and I've just reached the point where enough's enough. Uh, it's either affordability issue, if, if we cannot raise money, then, then affordability, that's the way to go. I agree, okay? I will agree because I'm not gonna break the county, uh, to, you know, the, our budget priorities and, and principles to get it fixed. But I want us to focus on that particular piece because we, we have been, since before I was on the board, Sheila.
I know.
Okay, this way, you guys, and you stopped short of filling in all the sewer systems down here. So I, I want, I don't know how to do this, but.
But they, but they asked tonight is, do you approve this in concept? Not as a rigid.
I'll go one step further. Why don't we just change Big Bethel to nine point five, so it matches the others that are at the top of the list and we'll come back and decide the order, uh, when we get to CIP.
Okay. I go along with that, just jack it, jack it up there and then if we don't change, then that's where we're gonna work on. Okay?
Live with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Changing the points where we haven't looked at, I mean, I understand that.
Sheila, you were gonna approve a plan just as it is without looking at it.
I believe me, I've gone through the whole damn thing, excuse my French.
I could go along with what he just said.
I, I think there's enough wiggle room in how you score that I don't have a problem changing it to match the, the top three on the, on the list.
Well, I, I think a lot of it has to do also with the numbers of people that you conserve and you're, you're looking at, okay, I'm not gonna argue the point.
It's, it's forty-eight, it's a fairly large number that we're serving and.
That's, that's right.
It's at the top of, if, if I, if I put it up with plantation and carver, rate, rate them all at nine point five and then decide based on funding when we can approve or when we can go forward, I think that's fine. That's what we said we'd do with CIP.
We're doing it now.
These, the first two are, are underwriting, so we're not, we're not debating those two.
And I've got some feedback for Old Dare Road, that's only a handful of houses.
Yes, sir. And that, that's how most of those projects, the relatively smaller projects, the ones prior to Big Bethel, that is probably the next bigger, you know.
That's definitely the biggest.
The size of the projects are diminishing.
Except for Shank estates.
And, and there is some financial consideration on doing it sooner rather than later because it's not gonna get cheaper, do it later. The sooner you get it done, the cheaper it's gonna be.
I like the idea we put it up there because what it does, it doesn't take it, doesn't, we don't forget it. It's gonna, it wanna be at the top of the list.
It'll be at the top, it still comes back to a funding question that we'll eventually address.
And we have that flexibility, so it's a good recommendation and I.
So even, even though we move it to the top doesn't necessarily mean that the funding will be there to do it.
That's exactly what we just said.
I know, and that's what, what, what I'm wondering is, are we giving false hope?
No, you're giving, no, what my desire right now is to get it off the bottom and get it up and up top, okay? Get us focused on it and keep us focused on it.
Okay, all right.
And the staff will be focused on it.
We're focusing on it, but, but the, but the bottom line is whether the funding is available at the time to do it.
You gotta change this to nine point five. Got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, I'm okay.
Okay.
They have to get up on favor.
I, I will entertain a motion for the last time.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
So moved with the revision.
Motion made by Mr. Hallroyd is to approve the consent calendar as amended. Mr. Hallroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
This is Noel.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay, have we had enough discussion? I don't think so, we still have some more to go. Who has something to talk about now? Would you like to go?
I have two items, Madam Chair. First one, I want to just brief the board on a meeting that took place last week, it was a meeting of VACO Region Two up in Gloucester Library. So Region Two is JCC, it's York County, it's essentially all of the northern neck, but not the lower peninsula.
Middle peninsula.
Middle peninsula. The purpose was to generate an initial draft of input to VACO on legislative priorities. Many are repeats from the previous year, the Veterans Tax Exemptions, the state allocations for school construction, increased teachers' compensation, requests that land use and zoning regulations remain within the authorities of local admin, local administrations. There were a couple of new topics and that's what I wanted to mention, they, they included Compensation Board's Funding Formula for the Constitutional Officers, uh, support federal and state funding for extension of the Capital Trail, Trail seven five seven, and address social services costs anticipated with the federal budget changes to programs such as SNAP and Medicaid. So consider a J-Lark study on that particular topic. That was the recommendations that came out of our meeting, I thought it was a very fruitful meeting. Second topic, again, it's on the topic of VACO. I'm attending the second module right now of, of three of the Supervisor's Certification Program offered through VACO. The current, the, the modules are Budgeting, Planning and Land Use and Leadership. We're currently in the Leadership Module. Matt Chase, who is the NACO Chair, and Bill Lady, former State Chief of Staff for, for both Warner and, and Kane, led the discussions on leadership. Very, very intriguing and thoughtful discussions, I really, really enjoyed the course. If you haven't been through it, I'd recommend that you consider it, it's, it's well worth your time. Thank you for the course, it's, it's, it's a certain certification course for supervisors.
Supervisors.
You've probably been through it.
Nope.
Nope.
By the time they offered it, it had already been in office like fifteen, sixteen years, so I got all, got all the hash marks.
You can teach it.
I was in it in the beginning, that it started, so it's been around for a long time.
Thank you.
But you're the first one to take advantage of it.
Well, I just kinda wanna remind everybody that early voting starts this month, September nineteenth, I believe, runs through November first. Go to our Registrar's Office in the Washington Square, South of Center, thank you. So get out, vote, you can make it out there, get your mail-in ballot done, but please participate in the voting process and be part, be part of the solution. September nineteenth, first day, so.
Very good, thank you.
It only took me thirty minutes to go three miles from my house, thanks to all the instructions. Washington DC has nothing on us when it comes to certain times down there around seventeen Washington DC has nothing on us when it comes to certain times down there around seventeen and Victory Boulevard. It is, uh, I, I was astounded because I, I took the kids over to the Y, which is normally a quick run, and then I turn up seventeen to come to the meeting, only find out that their program was canceled for that day, and so I had to do the reverse route, which is the worst time, everybody's going home. Seventeen was plugged up, okay, I, it was, I looked left, that's all I could say, because I didn't go any further. It was plugged up, and all the way down, uh, past, uh, see, it was down, probably to Kerry's Chapel, all right? That's about three miles. And, uh, and then people were peeling off on the side roads, trying to go through the neighborhoods. Big Bethel Road is backed up because everybody was trying to get through the various neighborhoods there. And there was just huge, she was just a mess. And, um, unfortunately, uh, you know, I talked about patience, we need to be patient because it's gonna be a slow drag getting home, and it's gonna be going on till at least the middle of next year, so...
I had, I had to wonder, when we were looking at the, uh, survey earlier, the score we got for transportation.
I saw that, yeah.
If they had, asked the same question now, I wonder what that score would be.
It's good to see we asked the question before all this started. What I'd like to talk about is, is we the people, the American Revolution, which is coming on September the twentieth. And I gotta tell you that the Colonial National Park, Jerry Marr is so excited about this, and they've done so much work. It, the whole activity begins like at three o'clock in the afternoon, it goes all the way through. They've got lots of, lots of food trucks that are gonna be there, there's gonna be lots of different activities. They're, they've even, even got the quilt that's being done, and they've got squares that people wanna sit there and, and do it in the afternoon and listen to the bands, they can do that. And, um, I just think that this is a marvelous thing, and this is the first big thing that, that the Park Service has done, and, and they've got, so far, over four thousand people who've signed up. So, do come, bring your own chairs, and if you wanna bring a picnic, that's fine, but otherwise, you get all the food trucks that you can get your dinner at instead of having to do it. But the activities for children, every, and things that are going on, start at three o'clock. And the county's been very helpful as far as parking and getting the parking set up and so forth. And this is all gonna be, trying to figure out where all this activity is. You know where the Park Service building is, if you're standing, standing, looking out towards, uh, the road, all to the, all to the left side is where it's going to be, and they, and they've got the old, oh, what is it?
Old Guard.
Oh, the Old Guard, thank you. The Old Guard is coming, uh, not just the band, but the whole regiment or whatever it is that they have. And also, our pipe and drum corps is gonna be part of it, and there's gonna be a music interplay between Old Guard musicians and pipe and drum musicians.
How are they gonna do, how are they gonna show the, the movie?
Uh, they're, they're setting it up on a big screen.
Outside?
Outside.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying, bring your chairs and sit, you're gonna want...
But where, where are they setting it up? I mean...
Um, it's...
Between the center, readout nine and ten.
Okay, so it's on the outside of the big park area, yeah, big area, okay.
Yes, it's, it's on the other side of the park.
And where are they gonna let people park?
Where they park, just like we do for the Fourth of July.
Okay, on, on the battlefield?
I'm not sure everybody can hear us saying the parking would be on the battlefield, like we normally do for the Fourth of July. So, anyway, they're excited about it, we're excited about it, and it's a wonderful way to get started on the two hundred and fiftieth. Uh, it is we the people, the American Revolution, and it's, uh, Ken Burns, is that what his last name is?
Yes.
What? I got it right for a change, okay. And, and what they're gonna be showing is the part that takes place in Yorktown. So, it, it, it's a family affair, and it's a Yorktown affair, so y'all come. With that, there's no further discussion. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Let's consider this meeting adjourned until the next meeting, which will be, uh, Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, in the Boardroom at Rock Hall.
Sixteen.
At six P.M.
Sixteen, Friday.
Sixteen, is that what I said?